Now in session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Sperry.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Herbuth.
Here.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Thank you.
If you will please stand and join Councilmember Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It was unexpected from me, too. All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no changes or objections to the agenda, it will stand approved as written.
Were you going to pull something?
Deflator.
Oh.
That's after citizen comments. Citizen comments, opportunity to express your views on issues that are important to you and to the community, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody wishing to be heard? Anybody wishing to comment? If you want to comment, you certainly can, but you can wave, too, if you want to do that. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I'd like to pull item D. So we can approve the consent agenda on items A through C. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, A through C, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I pulled item D because it's nice to make sure that everybody recognizes, in this case, Carol Chaput as a regular board member. I think Laurie, do you want to say anything?
Well, Carolyn has been great. I actually know her. She works, she's a nurse. She works at Children's Hospital, and she, of course, lives in Kenmore. And she is a biker, so she's very in tune with the whole bike situation. And she has been very faithful in attending, and now that we have an opening, she would like to be approved by the council as a regular member.
Wonderful. So, Chair L. Entertain, a motion, Councilmember Sperry, to approve item D.
So moved.
And I'll second that. All right, so motions to approve item D on the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The confirmation is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Is a public hearing to receive public testimony on the proposed 2016 tax levy ordinance number And so I'll declare the public hearing open. Nobody signed up. Anybody wishing to be heard on the public testimony on the proposed 2016 tax levy, ordinance number 15-0411? Is there anybody wishing to be heard? Anybody wishing to be heard? I declare the public hearing closed. All right. Mrs. Gregory, discussion of proposed tax levy for 2016 ordinance number 15-0411. I did that because since you were right up, there was no sense in doing it twice. So this way, you do your presentation, and we get all our questions answered all at once.
That makes sense to me. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Turn this on for you. This is a very short slide presentation, but I do have some interesting questions for you this evening. So, as you know, tonight, we're holding a required public hearing to set the 2016 property tax levy. Last week, we held public hearings for the, a public hearing for the capital improvement plan amendments, as well as the mid-biennium budget amendment, and tonight, the property tax levy. So next week, we would bring to you three ordinances, one to amend the CIP, one to amend the budget, and one to set the tax levy. So there will be another opportunity next week when I bring those to your attention if there's further, there will be further opportunity for discussion and direction. So as you know, even with a biennial budget, every year, the council has to set the tax levy and decide whether or not there's going to be an increase in the levy over and above new construction. So what you're now, what you're now about to see in my presentation is a little different than what you have in your packet, because my recommendation is going to be a little different. This is one of those odd years when inflation is so low that the IPD is lower than 1%. And this has not happened very often. So you know what the implicit price deflator is, and each year, we look at that versus 1% and determine, are you going to take an increase which needs to be the lower of one or the other? In some years, we've taken no increase and increased our bank capacity. This year, what I discovered in my first recommendation to take the 0.25% increase is that in doing so, that lowers our banked capacity that we've been saving up over the years. I didn't realize that when I wrote the agenda bill. So taking that 0.25% only brings in $11,000 to your 2016 revenue budget. This is a year that I think, you know, with our revenue streams, our strong development revenue, and our sales tax, it's probably not a year that you need to really look at increasing your property tax. We're putting $114,000 on the tax roll this year just for new construction. So it's a pretty stable and good year. What I'm going to recommend that you do is bank that capacity. If you were to pass a resolution of future substantial need, you could increase your levy by a full 1%, but then if you don't take the 1%, it will go into your bank capacity for future use. And that bank capacity would then be about $590,000. So that's where I'm going with this, with this presentation. So it's kind of a trade-off, giving up $11,000 today and a lower bank capacity versus no increase in the revenue this year, but a higher bank capacity for the future. And I'm thinking in terms of, you know, imagine Kenmore or any other needs that this city will have when our revenues are maybe not so strong.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes. This is, that's fine.
So let's go. Councilmember Smith.
I just want to make sure I completely understand what you're saying. So by not taking the quarter percent, then we get to bank the 1%. And so if, let's just say, the IDP comes in below 1% for the next five years, just for sake of argument. So every one of those years, if we did not take the lower of the 1% or the implicit price deflator, then we could bank 1% on each one of those years?
If you pass an ordinance that says, "I'm not going to take an increase this year," and if you pass a resolution that says, "We may have a future substantial need for that 1%, so please bank it for us."
Okay. Thank you.
So, go ahead, Councilmember Sperry.
Couple of questions. One, so when we take the 1% normally, we don't end up eating into bank capacity, correct?
We've taken a 1% the last two years.
Right, but that didn't eat into bank capacity? So why does this 0.25% then eat into bank capacity? I'm confused about that.
I'm confused about that, too. I don't know why. It's in the method where the assessor calculates what you could levy based on the implicit price deflator limiting factor, and then what your highest allowable levy is, and what you could levy based on a 1% increase, and what that allowable levy is. And if you take the quarter of a percent, your allowable levy is lower. So when you compare that to what you actually take, it's smaller than what you actually take versus the 1%. It's a very complicated calculation that I have to trust in, although it doesn't logically compute to me. So I just had this conversation with the assessor this afternoon, and I, you know, I told her, I said, "I just kind of don't get that." But she says, "When the IPD is less than 1%, all the rules change."
What changes? All the rules.
The rules change, yeah. So she said, "You'll lose $48,000 in your bank capacity if you take the IPD of 0.25, 0.25%. But if you preserve that by taking the resolution of substantial need in an ordinance where you don't actually take the money but bank it, you preserve your bank capacity and it stays at 590,000."
Okay. And what exactly is this re-levy for prior year's refunds?
Thank you for asking that. Councilmember Van Ness asked me earlier today, and I haven't normally brought that up. It's in every year's calculation, this small amount. And sometimes refunds are made to taxpayers either through an appeal process, or an error on the part of the assessor, a number of different factors, and property taxes are refunded. So in order to keep the city whole, we're allowed to re-levy that amount in the subsequent year. So it goes into the levy calculation. And it usually isn't very much, and it usually doesn't, it doesn't affect the rate, so I usually don't bring it up. But now the assessor is really encouraging us to call it out in our ordinance and in our documents. So I, that's what I'm doing.
So somebody appeals their assessment, they win, they get refunded some money, and then we essentially spread out what they got refunded out to the rest of their base.
Out to everybody else.
Okay.
Exactly.
Deputy Mayor.
It makes no difference, really, but I'm curious as to where this IPD comes from. How is it calculated? How is it related to CPI or whatever?
Well, since you asked. It comes from the Bureau of Economic Analysis, the BEA.
State?
It's a United States-wide indicator of the average increase in prices for all domestic personal consumption. And it came into play, I believe it was, was it 2000 or 2007, when Initiative 747, limiting the tax levy increases to 1% passed? Then IPD was put out there as, "We're going to compare every year's increase to this different indicator of inflation." Not, "We're not going to use CPI. We're going to use this indicator of personal consumption to limit the increases in the taxes." So it's either going to be 1% or inflation being IPD. So it's only, you know, been around for, what, 10, 15 years at the most? Not, certainly not 15, but just in the last period of time, when these initiatives, these tax-limiting initiatives have come forward, IPD has come forward as the limiter.
But now the CPI, is it at 0.25%?
No.
It's higher than that, isn't it? Are prices going up more than a quarter of a percent?
It is higher than 0.25%. I'm sorry. If you look at June to June, June 14 to June 15, I believe it's 1.1%.
Yeah.
So there are different mix of products that go into determining what the increase in the value of those products are from year to year.
Is this nationwide? Is it a nationwide index?
The BE, the IPD is nationwide, but Washington has adopted it as a property tax limiter. Other states don't use it for their property tax calculation, but it is a national indicator, whereas CPI can be national, or you can drill down to different regions, but it doesn't play into property tax, only the implicit price deflator does.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Councilmember Sperry.
I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Ms. Gregory. So just for my refresher, when you say banked capacity of 590,089, is that, is that like per year? Is that, I mean, what is that?
It's a bank account of unused tax capacity that has accumulated over the years when we could have increased property taxes by 1% but chose not to. And so it's accumulated over time. And it's available, should the council at some point wish to use that, you could raise your tax rate by, or your tax levy by, I think it's up to 13%, would capture that 590,000. You can take any portion of it at a time that you need it, but it's sort of set aside in a bank for future use because you chose not to use it in the past.
So it's not saying that this city could raise the taxes by 590,000 in one year?
You could. But then it would be gone, yeah. But you could, yes.
But then it wouldn't, so it would be like a one-year, one-time thing?
Well, it would raise your taxes.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we do it. I'm just trying to understand what the option, I mean, what this really means.
Another 590, but it would set your base that much higher.
Deputy Mayor.
So to clarify that, it increases the levy. If we were to take the bank capacity, 540 now would be 590 something. It would be a one-time increase and it would drop back, or you'd collect that 590,000 in the total levy every year thereafter. And then the percent increase would be on the aggregate of that and the previous base.
I believe it resets your base. I would rather look into that a little bit more and clarify that for you, because we haven't really had a serious discussion about using it and what that would mean. But I believe, because it's unused capacity, you could have been increasing your base all along.
Right.
And so your base would be higher. So this pulls you up to that. I don't think you'd drop back down. But I would really rather confirm that.
It's not a one-time increase in the levy. It's a one-time bump up of the levy base, and that continues year after year after.
I believe so.
As if we had been taking the 1%.
As if you had been taking it all along. Because if you had been taking it all along, our levy wouldn't be 4.5 million dollars by now. It would be 5 million something.
Be another half million more, yeah. Right.
But I'll do more research on that and make sure that that's correct.
Okay.
And let you know.
Any other questions? Okay.
So I wanted to illustrate for you, then, what the tax levy would look like compared to what we budgeted, so you can see that this was a good year for new construction. The proposed tax levy this year with no increase would be 4,556,000. There's $114,000 of new construction in there, and that's an update from what you had in your packet. I just received some new figures from the county. That meant that there was $83 million worth of new construction going on the tax roll, and that's the highest single-year value for new construction we've had since 2009. And then again, it includes the $1,995 re-levy. So what we budgeted for was $4,521,000, and at that time, I was estimating a 1% levy increase and $50,000 worth of new construction. So the proposed tax levy would exceed what we have in the budget by $34,000. Our assessed valuation is now at 3 billion 600,000 with the new construction in there. That's a 10 and 1/2% increase in assessed valuation overall from last year. It's a very substantial increase. So the tax rate is probably going to drop about 10 cents per $1,000 from $1.36 to $1.26 going into 2016. And that's just about at the lowest it's been in the city historically. This chart I show you every year because I'd like you to just see the small, the proportion of the different taxing districts compared to Kenmore, and Kenmore's a small piece of that total tax pie. So out of a total tax bill, say, of $4,800 on a typical 398,000 home, $98,000 home, Kenmore's share is 541. There's 12 various taxing districts.
So schools in one form or another, biggest shift.
Absolutely. So more than, more than half between the state and the local schools. This, so this is the end of my presentation. Again, I would really like to have some discussion with you as to what you'd like to see next week in form of a resolution and/or an ordinance. If you'd like to take the bank capacity, I'll bring you back a resolution of substantial need. If you want to bank it, we'll bring back an ordinance that says, "We're not going to take that increase this year."
With the resolution of substantial need, so that we get the full 1%?
Yes.
I mean, if that, it certainly makes sense to me, instead of taking a quarter to bank on 1%.
I think, I think you get more bang for your dollars that way by putting it aside for later. You get a greater value than taking a small amount this year when you have other substantial revenues, and it's not going to add a lot of value to your budget.
Everybody okay? Okay.
Okay.
That seems what everybody wants.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
City Works, software demonstration. John, you got everything you need, right? I mean, that's, you got the direction you wanted, right?
Yes.
Thanks. Just want to make sure that I wasn't, that I had it covered.
So I've got login and passwords, and projecting that over the screen probably isn't the best.
Tell them I is probably not a good idea.
So I just made a little.
Although we do trust her.
Although these are now public records, so you can, people can find out what your login password are, because they are public records now. So what Richard is going to give you the ability to do tonight is to look at citizen action requests in your pajamas in the comfort of your own home. That's what this is all about tonight.
Yes, so this is just my first non-surface water presentation. It should be a brief 10 to 15-minute, real basic overview of the City Works software. And I will take you all the way from how to log in, and then just some very basic kind of how to navigate around and find what you might be looking for. First, I personally like Google Chrome, but unfortunately, they have stopped supporting Silverlight, which is the map viewing application that the browser uses. So it now will work best either on Firefox or Internet Explorer. I don't know what's installed on here. I prefer Firefox.
Not Chrome.
But Chrome, if you don't want to use the map feature, it'll work fine, because the, you'll see in just a moment, the other side still works. It's just if you want to use the map, it needs Silverlight. I guess I will just use Internet Explorer.
How does it work on Safari? Because that's what we all have.
Oh, and it will work on your iPad. There's one little extra step, and I actually forgot to include that in here. I can email that to you, but basically requires, I'll log in. I'll show you here on the screen the setting that you pick, and it'll work on the iPad. That's actually what our inspectors use out in the field, so they're, we have iPads in little tough cases, and so they're out there in the rain, shine, doing their inspections, taking photos with it, and putting it in City Works, using the iPads out in the field. So the URL here is just real easy. There you go. So we were just talking about typically, you're just going to be in this office mode. If you were on an iPad, you want to just switch that to field mode. And all that does is in Safari, instead of trying to work the map and tabular data right next to each other, it just opens another tab, and you go to between the two tabs for your map versus your data, and that's, that's the main difference. I'm just going to log in as Mayor Baker. And everyone has the exact same inbox setup. Most of what I've set up is already going to be ready to go, the inbox. However, the map settings are stored and saved in your browser. So what I've gone through on these couple pages is just the real basic, how to just open up the legend, add that, and then set the map up real quickly, so then you're ready to go. And then until you delete the settings of your browser, those will stay there each time you log back into the computer that you set them on. So here we are. So when you log in, this is the first thing you see. So this is your inbox, your City Works inbox. And each inbox has two tabs. Basically, the first one on the left is just going to be anything that's open. So these are all active service requests being worked on by city staff. And the other tab will show all service requests, open and closed, everything we have in the system. So you can see the very top, I just threw in a chart that shows each year how many were initiated, and we have them going back to 1974. If you refer to the agenda bill, we've done a couple projects going back, and we got a lot of information from King County, our historical systems. We've used a couple different databases, and so we've incorporated 98, so we've put all of those into City Works. And you can see each year, that number that we deal with every year kind of grows. And I think this year, we're at about 1,200 right now.
So that complaint back in 1974, would that be a citizen we might recognize, or?
You know, I don't know. There were three. And you can simply, whenever you get these pop-ups, if you click on it, it's just going to open up those service requests.
We were at a city in '74.
So these were all from King County. So these are all from within Kenmore, but before we incorporated. So here were three here. Looks like we have, our oldest one is a stormwater vegetation complaint. That was up at 68th and 204th.
So it's not that there were three complaints that year? Those are just what's?
That's just what we have records of, yeah. Another thing to keep in mind is that this is very stormwater and public works-heavy. These were what we got from King County Water and Land Resources, and then Public Works has been doing this, tracking and recording service requests longer than other departments have. And another thing I forgot to mention, too, is many of you are probably familiar with the term CAR, Citizen Action Requests. So I use the terms interchangeably. It's Citizen Action Requests. City Works, they call them service requests. So within your inbox, just real briefly, I can show you, you can scroll down. I've broken down all of the open service requests by department, and each inbox is in the same order, but you can certainly come in, and these little arrows, if you want to have, put one higher than another, you can customize that. So you can go to any particular thing. So here's a stormwater nuisance complaints. There's currently eight open. If you click on that, it will actually take you to the eight open service requests, and you can click in those and go further. I've made some dummy complaints, because since this is potentially sensitive information, I wasn't going to open up any live data while it's being broadcast, but just.
This one is SW for surface water. The first group was CE. What does CE stand for?
I can actually, I'll open that up, and actually, I can just.
I was just wondering what the abbreviation CE was.
Sure. So the problem types are code enforcement, CE; development services is DES. When we first started, executive is for the city manager, department. Facilities, we actually, Public Works has broken down into public work facilities, parks, storm and streets, and then you've got planning, community development, and police. And these can obviously grow. I actually met with the directors of each department just a couple weeks ago to roll this out, and they can kind of start looking at this, and if they want to see more categories or more breakdowns of how they want to categorize their service requests, we'll be meeting again and incorporating those changes into here, and you'll just automatically see those. And if you see something you don't understand or something new, feel free to email me directly or ask Rob, and then he can direct those questions to me.
What do you do when one request has several issues within it that fit in different categories?
We, that's a good question, and.
Because there are citizens that have a really difficult time sticking. Because there are citizens that have a really difficult time sticking with one topic.
Yes, and ideally, we would kind of break that into different service requests, and it would just be, each one would be kind of include the same citizen. But then that way, because you could route, you know, one might go to me, another one might go to Jennifer for a street question, another one might go to Rob for, you know, another inquiry that, for the city manager's office. And we can do that, and it's just a matter of how you put them in and break them up. But unfortunately, one service request is limited to the one type, so we would break that up that way. So that's the inbox. And then what I wanted to show now, and what this shows basically is up in the right on the first page here, you'll see, I have it circled for the map icons. And basically, you can either open the map fully up with the left one, the middle one does a split screen, and it's going to need to install Silverlight. I thought this would be ready to go. Why that's updating, you go to the next page, basically what would happen is you'll get this split screen with the map on the right and your inbox on the left. And this is what I was talking about, you have to, well, the first time you go into a web browser and fire up City Works, you'll need to tell it, you know, what, that you want to see the legend application and the, or whatever tools here you'd like to put on there, and then turn whatever layers you want on and off. And then once you've done that and saved, the browser will remember that, and you come back to your computer, and it will be where you left it. Do I trust Microsoft?
Now, do we need Silverlight to run it on the iPad? I can't seem to get my Silverlight to run.
That is, so in the, that first screen, the blue City Works screen, where you select office and field, that's where I mentioned you would select field mode. And then what that does is it bypasses Silverlight and opens up two tabs within the browser. And I can switch over to that and show. I might just need to log out and start.
It said you had to close your browser and come back in.
So that, yeah, that field, you would select that on the iPad, and it would open it up. Which actually, you can switch, actually, while you're in here too. I wonder if I just, I can switch to field mode. And then now when I click on that, it opens up a second tab over here, which I guess maybe for the sake of the presentation, I'll just do that. So you can imagine this is on the right of your, your screen with your inbox on the left. The, the steps in here, when you go into the field mode, they're all already there, the tabs that I kind of just show you how to add and the other way. So what you would add over there would be the legend, and then what I try to show is that, for instance, you probably don't want to see the stormwater GIS stuff on here. Every time you're using it, it kind of makes it busy. So you can come into the legend and turn off the stormwater, and then it makes it much clearer.
Is there somewhere where that color key is, is defined?
Yes, you can customize that, and I don't go into that depth.
But just right now, can I see what blue is?
Which, like, which one of these is blue?
That one's blue.
Yeah, this one is.
But I mean, what does blue mean?
It is.
Is there a definition somewhere?
Yeah. I don't use this one.
Oh, okay.
So you can down-click.
Got it.
And similar on the, the main office version, this will be right there, the, all the way to the left will drop down legends.
And show what?
So yellow and red is that.
Got it.
So then you go through, you add the legend, you can turn off stormwater. Those layers will grow as we incorporate more, so we'll probably get the critical area layers in there. You know, as we develop other GIS layers, we can put those in there, so then you would also have access to, you know, see whatever GIS data we have. And for instance, so surface water is there, and you could now, if you go in and, and there's a visible icon to turn it on and off in the map, and then there's a selectable icon. And when you select that, you will then be able to go and use the selection rectangle. And then if surface water's on, you could select the catch basin, and it'll tell you everything you could possibly want to know about that catch basin in a little window that pops up. What I wanted to focus on today was what you probably are more interested in is how to come in here and look for things that you might be interested in. And basically, there's a button that will bring you to your inbox, and then the other one here, if you drop down, you can search service requests, pretty much every field that we can put something in, you could search for a specific item in that field. The middle, search requests, you can do a custom one. You can always hit save search, and there are dozens of searches that are already here that if you wanted to come in. And this is actually how your inbox is set up. Your inbox is just, has different panels that use these saved searches. When you open up your inbox, it runs that search and then populates that, that panel. So for instance, when you see Public Works, Streets, Open Service Requests, that is just one of these saved service searches that have those parameters in it. But you can come in here and, and look for open department, Public Works, and they'll have all the department staff in here and, that have open service requests for each of those staff members. But what I wanted to show was if you come in here to service requests, which I think on the last page of the handout, I just provide a very brief overview of, if you forget where to click and, and open this screen up. There's four tabs here. The first one has just very general information. You can say you wanted to search for everything that was submitted to me, Richard. So right now, that's just going to give you every service request ever submitted to me. Fill up your inbox, and you can go and look through that. You could break that down, come down here, closed question mark, no. So now it's going to tighten that up a little bit, and it's only going to show you service requests submitted to myself that are open. So I think you get the point there. If you ever do something, you want to clear it out, if you just hit clear, it will clear out all the fields. You can move over to details. This will have caller information. You could look up a name, first, last, address, problem types. This is where you can get, and this is actually good too, if you're wondering what the descriptions are, they're usually under the, the type that they fall in. So you could just look for all service requests, code enforcement for graffiti. And now your search, when you hit search, it's going to show you every, there you go, every service request we have in the system for code enforcement graffiti type. And, let's see here. Oh, must have been in this mode. Going to try this one more time, because it is much better in office mode. I put together some. Well, no, it's not even wanting to do that. Well, anyhow, I put, so on the map, when you're in the map, you can actually scroll around in those little circles that you saw representing open service requests. You can hover over them and then click on them, and then just open up the information on it if you're interested, well, what's going on here? So you can also search from the map side and just click on those circles and open them up. Which I was going to start off with by opening up a fake service request I set up. But I can also just come in here and search for it. So I made up a service request under the name of Bob Jones. So I'm going to come down here and just look up Bob Jones, search. Oh, there's four of them. That's, oh, Bob Jones did exist. I was hoping that didn't happen. So I'm going to open it up here, and just kind of wanted to give you an example. So here's an open service request. Say for some reason, you were interested in this Bob Jones issue, so you came in and, and opened it up. You can see kind of when it was open, who was initiated by, who's it, who's it currently dispatched to, who's working on it. You could see any comments here, if any existed. I, what I've done here is done a couple of different types of attachments to show that we can attach PDFs, Word documents, videos, photos, anything, make PDFs of emails, throw them in there, so that you can see a history of any correspondence or anything associated with this service request. And you can just click on those, and they will open up. So here was a graffiti, a fake graffiti complaint that I put in. You could see the picture. I put it in as a PDF, a Word document, I think you get the point, or even a movie here. It'll just open up with the whatever movie clip in there. So I just made a little fake video using my iPhone of my computer screen of the graffiti. And then it's uploading to City Works, and you can download that wherever you're at. Then another interesting thing is I put in three fake service requests, and I had them all submitted by the same fake citizen, Bob Jones. You can come in here and see from this service request, oh, Bob Jones has three in the system. So you could actually go back and forth and see what else, you know, he's talked about. So we can click on one here, looks like a complaint was submitted to Joanne. I picked her because she was here tonight. Looks like Mr. Jones emailed that a skateboarder had skinned his elbow. And then Joanne met with the skateboarder, put a Band-Aid on the elbow, and all's well. And then followed up that Mr. Jones was emailed that the incident was resolved and the case closed. And you can see, you can even throw in a little photo of a skateboarder with the alley. And then what you're not seeing here, unfortunately, because of the Silverlight, is that if I had had that map open, as I'm going between these different service requests, the map is just panning over to where these incidents occur. So this one I had geocoded to City Hall, so it panned over to the skate park to show that this was where the service request happened. The other one, I made a fake light complaint on Northeast Balthway, and it would have panned over and shown where that light complaint was showing. So that's kind of in a very brief overview what, what City Works can do. I think the best thing to do is you can go in and just play with it. I will point out that, I mean, you have a read-only login, so you don't have to worry about, you can go in and it may look like, you can even type in there and change settings and everything, but, but what it is, is you can't save anything. So you may think you're doing something, but you can't, you can't hurt it. So feel free to explore and just try different ways of searching for things, and try using the map and looking at the different layers. And if you have any questions at all, feel free to email me, and I will try and get back to you as soon as I can.
Does this interface with, with other software that we're looking at getting?
We have not.
Does this work with the GIS system and sort of?
Well, it is using our, so the, the GIS data that you're seeing is live from our ArcGIS server. So as I'm out mapping new features and surface water, those are instantly showing up in City Works. We will be working on, with our new permit tracking software, City Works kind of starts with code enforcement, that the things that go to that will be sent down to them, and then they can complete that cycle, and then shoot it back to City Works so that we can kind of see the full picture. So that'll probably be our first real integration with another software.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, is if this can be integrated with other stuff so that we can start building and seeing bigger and bigger pictures and not have to go to five different applications to see.
Yeah, that, and that's.
Five different things that could be done.
Yeah.
By being able to use data from wherever.
That's our hope, is that this can be kind of a one-stop shop.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sperry and then councilmember Curtis.
Well, thank you, Richard. This is a great tool. Couple of questions. One is, when you were showing us the pictures, the things that you can add into the service requests, does that mean that a citizen took a picture of, say, the graffiti or a situation and sent it into the, I guess, email? Would that be something that could be imported into this?
Yeah, and you will often see that when we, particularly with email, when we get an email from a citizen, we will actually just put that email in here along with whatever attachments that they put in. And so you can just go to the service request and open those up.
Great. My second question is, are there any reports that you can run off of this or that I, as a council member, could run? Because sometimes it's nice to just get a sense of, you know, what's the big hot topic or, you know, what's kind of more of a general picture?
Yeah, and actually, that's essentially what the search tools will do. You can, you know, create your own searches and save them for yourself, and, I mean, anything you can think of. If you want to look for a particular issue, you can find all of those. You can break them up by year. You can go into the map. I mean, there's so much I can't cover quickly, but you know.
Yeah, so essentially, if I have a question, there's a way to search it and get a, get a report that would look at that data.
Yeah, and for what you're looking for too, when you're in the map, and I show on the, was that the second page, where I, you know, just turn on the legend and the bookmarks, which I couldn't show without Silverlight, but all of those other tools are there too. So what you're talking about might be hotspot. So you can make a search for groundwater issues, and then that hotspot tool will make a heat map over your map, and like, white, really hot will be where they're grouped together a lot with cooler colors representing where we don't have those kind of issues. So you can create heat maps for whatever kind of search you want to do. And then I, the bookmark tool I threw in there, if you want to quickly just go to set places, it's got like City Hall, all the parks, things like that. You can click on it, and then the map will just zoom you right over to that. But feel free to explore those other tools on there.
Thank you.
My question was, what's the source of the, the data for the property lines? And I specifically asked the question because I know there's something funny that happens on the south side of our property, where one subdivision came up and quit, and then another subdivision started from a different place. And to make sure they didn't overlap, they actually left a foot and a half between, because I've had my property surveyed. So there's actually a foot and a half between our subdivision and the other subdivision. But that doesn't show up on something like this.
Yeah, the, a scale of that nature probably wouldn't, this only zooms in to about 1 to 250.
Okay.
But we get the data from King County GIS, and we actually just, I've been working with development services, and we now kind of centralized our GIS data. So the new permitting software was now using the same parcel, address points and street layers that City Works is using, as well as our online GIS viewer. So they're all just pointing at those, that King County. So we download it and put it on our server, but we are, but we do get it from King County, and that's updated quarterly.
One, one reason I was asking is I had an idea at one point. If we found all those little bits of land that we inherited from King County when we became a city, that are not really individual people's property, they're still ours, we could sell them to the individuals and make some money for the city.
Oh.
There you go.
You bring that up with Rob.
Deputy Mayor.
Maybe it's just me, but I'm just, the information that's on this comes from a variety of different sources. Is that right?
That's correct.
It all doesn't come from citizen action requests? Or does it?
They all, well.
Well, you've got citizens' names on them here, then they can bring them up.
Well.
Initiated by citizens?
You're correct, but they could be initiated by staff as well. So I might be out doing, you know, my tasks out in the field and see something and actually initiate a service request myself if I see something going on.
And what if, if we as council members are out around and about and see something that we want to call to your attention? We can't input it into this. We have to go through you or the department that is, that concerns that.
That's correct, yeah. I just contact the city.
Then they put it onto this. And what about citizens out there? Do they have access to this at all? Because they don't have these usernames and passwords.
That's correct. They do not have access.
This is not open data.
Not yet, no.
Okay, is there, are there plans to make it open? Okay, is there, are there plans to make it open?
There are discussions to, yes, I include that at a future date.
Okay, thank you.
And if you wanna see a good example, I'd go to City of Shoreline. They have, they use City Works and then they've used a third-party application called C Click Fix It, where a citizen can go onto the website and do that. So that could be something we explore in the future.
Any other questions? Mr. Mayor Herbig.
So going through the downtown area, I see a bunch of individual businesses actually labeled on the parcels on the map. Who, who did that?
I did that. So that's just a personal layer that I use, which is just helpful, it actually started more for when I have my seasonal inspectors out and about. It gives them landmarks that they can see and help orient them, cause oftentimes they're just coming in, they're here for four or five months, they don't really know the city that well. But thank you for asking the question, cause I also point out that I've also, as we're doing work in different areas, I try and add helpful labels, so you'll see, I've tried to identify all King County-owned properties. So as you're scrolling around the map, you'll just see a random King County, you know, owned by King County. And I do the same with the city, cause you'd be very surprised at just how many random parcels are either owned by King County or the city. And then I also try and identify, sometimes, you know, if it's helpful to know that it's, this particular parcel's owned by an HOA or some neighboring parcel. So we'll be building better labels as we, as we continue, but you'll, you'll come across that where we've identified issues like that. And the recent windstorm, that came really handy because we were trying to figure out who owned what. Thanks.
Anything else?
Your honor, if I could just jump in on a couple of things. So you have a read-only access here, you won't be able to input anything. And one thing that we ask is that, just be sensitive about the information that's in here, because there is a possibility that any given citizen action request could result in litigation. And so what information is given out or distributed, we need to be sensitive about that. Also, you know, if a citizen calls you and you look up their, their case, that's great, that's what this is for. This is, this tool is here for you as policymakers and to test the system and see how it's working from your constituents' perspective. One thing we ask though is you do try to stay at the policy level as much as possible and not try to dive in and solve each problem. Obviously if we have dissatisfied citizens or whatever, we definitely wanna hear about that, or if you are seeing that the system's not working, obviously wanna hear about that. But on a per-case basis, I do have capable coworkers that have the ability to provide good customer service and I would hope that we would trust our staff to do that.
Clarification, you did say we could save searches.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so that we can save. If we wanna do a search, that's, that sort of information, we can save and call up again if we want to.
Yeah, so I'm logged in as yourself, so I could come in here and, you know, I wanna look for everything that was, just gonna pick Debbie cause she's at the top, and then come up here and I would save as, I would just save it as a user. And so this search in that dropdown list is only gonna show up to you and you can call it whatever you want and then that search will be there whenever you want it. Just when you hit that save. I won't save that one, I don't know if you are that interested in everything that Debbie does, but.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda then, salary commission appointments. I think you all saw the email that the mayor can appoint and council can approve. If you don't like my choices, you don't have to approve. But I picked three people to be on the salary commission and that would be Todd Baker, no relation, Shaw Crawford, and Glenn Rogers. So if there's no objection to those appointments, I would ask for approval, and I guess I would, to be on the safe side, entertain a motion to approve Shaw Crawford, Todd Baker, and Glenn Rogers to the salary commission.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Now just to be clear, they have full authority to do whatever they wanna do, at state law. There's no interference from us at all. They wanna give us zero, they give us zero. And we abide by their decision. So as long as everybody understands that. Deputy Mayor.
Have these individuals been contacted and are they willing to serve?
Yes, they are willing to serve.
Thanks.
Anything else?
So to just clarify what you just said, so they could cut the pay from whatever it is now, down to zero and say, we think this should be a public service job?
Yep, certainly can. So with that, the motion on the table then is to appoint Shaw Crawford, Todd Baker, and Glenn Rogers to the salary commission to serve until the decision is reached on the salary, then the commission is dissolved. So clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, I will notify them. We have information from Association of Washington Cities showing the current salary ranges that we'll make available to them. And I'll verify that with the city manager before I get the information. And with that, Stafford.
Yeah, a couple of things, you may have seen the weather forecast, we're in for some interesting weather tomorrow. Wind gusts up to possibly 60 mph, so we're bracing for that. And hopefully we'll be able to withstand that and not have too many power outages or damaged property and persons. Also last week, you directed us to do what we can to get moving on the St. Edward State Park ballfields and having the city enter into an agreement with State Parks on getting control of those ballfields for improving them and operating and maintaining them. And so we have begun those efforts. Debbie Bent has done a great job resurrecting the documents from 2007 and '08. And so we have the, the design work that was done and the SEPA, MDNS, and tons of really good information. We've contacted the landscape architect that was in charge. We have contacted State Parks and had a conference call with Director Don Hock and two of his staff just this afternoon. They seem open to this idea and helpful and we're kind of coming up with milestones and timelines. What we're shooting for is at the end of March, very, the last two days of March, the State Parks Commission is meeting in Olympia and it would be good to have an agreement where State Parks gives us the ability to improve and operate the ballfields and have that approved at the March, late March meeting, the State Parks Commission meeting. So that's kinda what we're aiming for. Some things need to happen in advance of that and they need to happen really fast. But in a, in a manner that respects public process as well. We think that a, a public meeting about this would be good. Timing still to be determined and some other things that we need to make sure get in place from a public participation perspective. So just wanna let you know that we are following up on the direction you gave us last week.
Thank you. Comments, initiatives, reports? Councilmember Smith?
I have nothing to add, but I would like to thank the city manager for all that update and information that you guys and Debbie Bent, that you've pulled together in last week. That's fantastic.
Nothing to add?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Danuski.
I was able with Councilmember Sperry to be on the art selection board last week and gosh, there's some talented people out there. We narrowed it down to four for interviews and we'll continue on with the process, but it was pretty impressive.
Deputy Mayor.
Nothing tonight.
Couple of things. The Art Committee went really well, got through 27 of them, got them down to four. Really talented people, a lot of good stuff. I went to, also after the Art Committee meeting on Thursday, I went to the ST3 Steering Committee meeting. There's a number of things that came out of that. One is, we're gonna be trying to set up a joint meeting with our council, Lake Forest Park Council, the new one, and Bothell's council on January, the week of January 11th. Cause there is a, yeah, January 11th, because there's a board meeting coming up at the end of January and we want to make sure we're all on the same page, we're all in agreement, we're all working together. Tomorrow I'm meeting with the new Lake Forest Park Mayor and a council member, Catherine Stamford, who is very big on transportation and issues, and Shoreline's legislative person, Scott McCall. And we're gonna meet here, we're gonna discuss ST3 and the three things, parking right on 522, bus rapid transit on 145th, bus rapid transit on 522, to make sure that we've all on the same page. Shoreline's been a little bit quiet lately and we want to make sure that we're all on the same page, all asking for the same thing. Going to be attending the Sound Transit Board meeting, just to show Kenmore is there, Kenmore is live, we don't expect to say anything, we just want our presence known and show them that we still are a strong force on December 4th. So we will be at that board meeting where they will be narrowing the list down and passing out templates that we all need to be aware of and work with. Today I had a meeting with John Fine, the president of United Way, to talk about some of the cuts the county is gonna be experiencing in senior care and senior services, 1.7, 1.8 million dollars, and a lot of that is to the senior food programs. And I have a big concern about that because a lot of these elderly people's sole social contact is over meals, at the senior center, Meals on Wheels. And when I see that much money being cut out of the, out of King County alone, I mean, I get, I'm a little bit concerned with that. So we had a meeting with that. It was, it was, it was a pretty good meeting, but certainly nothing was resolved. And the cuts are to go into effect in July. K-Big, Kenmore-Bothell Interface Group had a meeting up at the Bothell Methodist Church last Tuesday, yeah, last Tuesday, and we talked, basically, I was part of a panel on Ten Cities. And the meeting was about Ten Cities and I think it was really a good meeting. Councilmember Herbig goes there for a little bit of it. All in all, I think it was a really good meeting, a lot of interest, there was 50 people or so. Quite a few, quite a big number. The church was, certainly was, was pretty much full. A lot of interest, a lot of good questions, so that's all I have. And I think we have an executive session. We are going to adjourn into executive session, present to RCW 30.1101 subsection I, dealing with potential litigation. And there will be possible action. We will be adjourning for?
20 minutes.
20 minutes. So let's take five right now, that, that means, let's make that seven. Let's go in at 15, how's that? We'll start at 8:15. We will be out at 8:35 of the executive session. So, seven minutes.
I hear something beeping.
Almost every three times.
Yeah.
Still figure that out?
I honestly don't know.
Been alone for a little while in the wolf fight.
That's something you should be asking the board, that'd be a good question. I don't have a proof. You're the ones responsible for the bot.
I know, but.
Do we, since we paved it for the road, I'm assuming we have.
I think.
Kenmore City Council's back in session from exec, or we're still in the executive session. Councilmember Smith, you have a motion?
I do. I move that. Number one, the city manager is authorized to settle the dispute between the city and MSPT 11 regarding the grades and composition of the Kenmore Town Green Project soil through the payment of $30,000 by MSPT 11 to the city and to sign a settlement agreement in a form approved by the city attorney. And number two, the city manager is authorized to sign an amendment to the amended.
Let's do that second one as a separate motion, right?
It's all part of one motion. There's two parts to the motion. So starting with number two again, the city manager is authorized to sign an amendment to the amended and reciprocal grant of easements and agreements between the parties and new easements related to the agreements that are necessary to settle the dispute.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Councilmember Smith, do you have anything else?
No, I'm satisfied, thank you.
Is there anything else to come before us from executive session? We're now out of executive session. And anything else for the council? We are adjourned.